As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order, ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask lord now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus's name we pray, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
One quick adjustment, sir, we'd like to add two closed session items, one to discuss real property and one to discuss a legal matter.
All right, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented and adjusted.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Up next, your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign, motion carries. Up next, under introduction and special presentations, the National Library Workers' Day proclamation presented by council member Williams to present to the library staff. Councilman Williams.
Yes, town of Clayton proclamation. Whereas Focut Ellington Memorial Library provides community members with the knowledge and information they need to live, learn, and work in the 21st century. Whereas there are thousands of academic, governmental, public school, and specialized libraries in the United States and provide excellent and invaluable services to library users regardless of age, ethnicity, or socioeconomic background. Whereas libraries represent a microcosm of the larger society and library workers play an important and unique role in the communities that they serve by providing an inclusive, elementary, environmental, whereas all are treated with respect and dignity. Whereas librarians and library support staff bring the nation a world of knowledge in person and online, as well as personal services and expert assistance in finding what is needed when it is needed. Whereas it is important to recognize the unique contribution of all library workers and the values of individual and society of those contributions. Whereas a steady stream of recruits to library work is necessary to maintain vitality of library services in today's information society. Whereas libraries, library workers, and library supporters across America are celebrating the National Library Workers' Day sponsored by American Library Association, allied professional association. Therefore, be resolved that I, Gretchen Williams, council member proclaimed today, Monday, April the first, 2024, as National Library Workers' Day. I encourage all in this community to take advantage of the variety of library resources available and to thank library workers for their exceptional contribution to America life. Thank you.
Thank you, and at this time, I'd like for councilman Williams to be joined by our library staff, our volunteers, and our workers. We'd like to get a picture of this, thank you.
Smile big. One more. Perfect.
Awesome, thank you. All right, up next, we're going to jump to staff reports, beginning with the town manager presenting a budget survey, the budget survey results.
Good evening, mayor, council, Rich Capola, town manager. I know you guys have heard a lot from me today earlier in the work session regarding our budget and FY25 priorities, but one of the things that we've historically done now for the last several years is gone out to the public with a budget survey to be able to really get an idea of where our constituents would like us to see the FY25 budget focused. So Nathaniel's bringing this up, I'll go ahead and jump right into it, you should all have a copy of it right there in front of you in paper copy, as well as I believe there is the listing of the individual responses that was also provided. We're not going to go through every one of those today because I believe there's about 500 plus individual written responses as well, but wanted to at least go through the data that we have here in front of you. So again, this is the third year, I believe, in a row that we've done this through the communications department and the budget office. Had very good participation, a little over 1,500 participants again this year if you look at page one while we're bringing it up on the screen. Just about, just under 1,000 folks indicated that they lived in town limits, approximately 440 within the ETJ, about 84 business owners, 256 folks that work here in town, 450 that like to come here for play, and 35 of which own rental property. That was a new question on the survey this year, so more to come in terms of the data, but hoping to get some additional participation from all of those groups, but again, 1,500 plus survey responses for our town, our size is pretty good for us, and it's been pretty consistent annually. So when it comes to the data, skip to the next one, is that going to work? There we go. All right, so as part of the data, one of the questions, how long have you lived here in town for the 990 respondents that lived here in the town limits? As you can see, we are predominantly a younger town when it comes to the amount of time folks have lived here, with the majority of the responses being in the zero to 10 years, predominantly most just moving here within the last five to 10. We did have fairly good participation though in the 10 to 20 plus year range as well, so feel like we got a good cross section of what our community is currently made up of. Of the folks that responded that were willing to answer, approximately 87% of them are homeowners and 13% currently rent their home. With regards to the size of household, as you can see, the majority of our households right now are approximately two families, or two persons in the household, but a very good cross section once again in terms of the one to more than five people. That holds very hard, or is very consistent with our other data that has shown that we have a lot of families and young families moving to town, so very consistent with other data that we've been able to receive. So one of the main questions that we had broken down into the same categories that we've done over the last several years is where would you rank, no, one to eight, because those are the eight different categories we've got it set as, where would you rank those in terms of where we should focus our fiscal year 25 priorities in order of importance? Probably not a big surprise, as it's been pretty consistent over the last several years, that public safety, our police and fire services are number one once again this year. This year, the economic stability and growth factor has actually increased to the number two spot within regards to order of importance with this particular subset, excuse me, survey respondent group, followed by environmental sustainability and transportation. Not trying to say all, want to make sure I shouldn't say that all the items that are on the list here are important, but based on the survey respondents, this is where they felt like the focus of our spending should be with the FY25 budget. Again, very consistent with what we've had over the last couple of years. Little bit different way to ask the question is where would you see our tax dollars being spent, so I believe, you know, given a dollar, how would you divvy it up was kind of the framework of the question. Again, for FY25 there in the red, 21 being public safety, 19 being transportation, those are your two highest scores. Over the last several years, I think we've had a very good story to tell with regards to our focus on infrastructure and reinvesting in not only what we have, but also expanding what we do. That's where a lot of the dollars have been focused and will continue to be moving forward. When it came to cultural arts, this is the breakdown of where folks felt like the cultural arts expenditures should be focused, family friendly experiences, again, holding on to that theme that we have a lot of younger families here in town, that seemed to be the predominant winner, as well as our concerts. That was left pretty vague, so that could be the concerts in downtown, or it could be the concerts that we host here at the Clayton Center. So again, a big focus for the overall community, but essentially, all forms of our cultural arts givings, whether it's the mural, sculpt trail, Clayton Center lobby art, all receiving votes to be able to make sure that we maintain those programs. The emphasis really on this was entertainment, diversity, special focus on enhancing African American festivities and cultural expression. There was a strong desire for inclusive and varied activities catering to all age groups, highlighting the need for the community and family engagement. There was interest in festivals, public art, and specific activities for kids, teenagers, and teenagers to foster that communal connection. Critical perspective on content appropriateness and allocation of funds expressed some dissatisfaction with some of the public art installations. I think we've discussed that in the past, and the mayor's been a pretty big advocate that art is to foster discussion, and it can be on both sides of that coin, but we're glad people are talking about art at the end of the day. Last was calls for financial prudence within the cultural arts investments, I think some of the discussions we've had particularly with our cultural arts department over the last several years and the programming and the events that we're doing, and how we're tracking those has been very enlightening, but also they have been doing their best to try to broaden out the types of acts as well as just the overall offerings we have here in town. So all in all, good comments, and again, these are main themes coming from that long list of about 500 plus type responses. From the economic stability and growth, probably no surprise here again, construction of infrastructure improvements to support new and expanding businesses was the number one vote getter with regards to where those dollars should be spent. I think our long discussions with regarding the CIP and some other opportunities within our region to be able to expand have kind of led to that same request, but again, can't forget some of those other opportunities for promoting our downtown businesses and marketing our different campaigns for the new businesses and new industries that we're looking to lure. Common themes within the comments, balancing growth with infrastructure enhancement to maintain community identity and support the expansion sustainably. Prioritize the economic and fiscal responsibility to keep living costs low and manages resources wisely. Emphasizing support for local, small, minority owned businesses to foster a vibrant community and economy right here in town. Advocating for cautious development that respects the town's heritage, improves public infrastructure, enhances quality of life. And addressing rapid urbanization by preserving the small town feel and ensuring a diverse range of business offerings. Lot of the discussions you all have been having with regards to the UDO, the strategic plan, I think those are very consistent with what the community is looking for based on those comments. On the environmental sustainability, again, kind of a equal, almost all things getting equal votes here, but stormwater runoff, increased renewable energy, improving sanitation, recycling services, and resources for community forestry efforts, kind of a broad spectrum, but all garnering, receiving significant requests within the budget. The push for sustainability of banning single use plastics, enhancing water quality and reducing pollution, we've got many programs here in town that were currently leading us in those directions. Being able to promote those a little bit better is on the horizon. Promoting the clean environments, healthy food, better quality, advocating for smart urban planning, enhancing community health through creative gardens, encouraging eco-friendly practices and upgrade to public spaces, and then improving the infrastructure, again, that infrastructure theme coming throughout pretty much every sector or section of this survey results. With regards to the library, additional engaging programs for children and teens was the top request, but also not far behind was additional learning program opportunities for adults and seniors as well. Then again, through the Parks and Rec master plan discussions and the street plan, those have been pretty consistent requests throughout the different avenues to be able to get feedback from folks, but again, good support for technology, more books and literacy programs. Some of the comments, again, modernizing the library, the space, updated children's area and adopting a more modern bookstore vibe. Versifying collections, broadening the books and digital resources, as well as enhancing programming with new book clubs, educational initiatives, and facilities for studying and socializing. Operating hours were up for consideration or requested for consideration, as well as resource sharing with the nearby libraries. Some of this stuff, I believe, with our joining Cardinal and some other initiatives that we've done through the library over the last year may just be folks need to get, we need to get the word out a little bit more about those opportunities. On the park and recreation front, has been a pretty consistent theme again over the last several years, is maintaining and renovating our current parks, recreation facilities, and greenways. As you all know, we just broke ground on the third of three major renovations, this one being community park and the community center in conjunction with the community center for the third part of the 2018 bonds. Once that project is completed, we should also be getting, having the completion of the Parks and Rec master plan, so that should give us a little bit better information too on how to grow and possibly add new parks, as was the second top vote getter, but then also provide us other opportunities for additional programming for kids, adults, and seniors, as has been a focus as well. Common themes, adding a second community center and/or aquatic center to enhance the recreational facilities, we find that that's probably consistent with some of the feedback that you will be hearing from the Parks and Rec master plan consultants, increasing our maintenance of the dog parks, more teen programs, promoting our agricultural heritage, not forgetting where we came from, that's another consistent theme that we've seen within the comments. Enhancing our downtown with potential scenic elements, additional activities for special needs adults, as well as more open sports fields and quiet green spaces. We've done a pretty good job of enhancing the facilities that we have currently, but looking at broadening those out and possibly acquiring some new, as well as maybe some more passive recreation is kind of a theme that we've seen. As well as possibly expanding for new disc golf course and possibly downtown parks with better access to the Neuse River. The Neuse River is one of the greatest assets that we have right here coming through town, being able to capitalize on that would definitely be a better, a great option for us, and I believe is a part of that Parks and Rec master plan discussion as well. The big ticket item here, the transportation and infrastructure, maintaining our existing roadways and improving, improvements to our existing roadways, as we've done with the last several fiscal year budgets, we do have a fairly robust road rehabilitation program north of $2 million a year that is invested to maintaining those roads, however, as we've discussed in the past, we could spend double that easily just based on the needs that we have. We'll continue to track that, but as we are finishing up the transportation plan, which is about halfway through that process, we feel like we'll get some more informed decisions on how we can improve some of those roadway facilities as well. That will feed into that construction of new roadways, as well as potentially public transit and/or other bike pit kind of opportunities that are coming as part of those recommendations. So again, common themes, pedestrian and bike access at crosswalks, bike paths, we have a much, a very active community. Bikes, greenways, trails, all of the above, the more we can get, I think the better. Addressing some of our traffic and safety, tracking congestion, speed cameras, enhancing road lighting, those are all things that we can consider as well. Bus and transportation links, we know we've had several conversations about transit and other opportunities within the region, we'll continue to explore those. Focusing on the upkeep, road maintenance and repainting lines and modernizing, again, we got a pretty robust package that is about to hit the bid portal if it hasn't already, I may need to check on that, it may already be out, but that should be kicking off over the summertime like it typically does. And then last but not least, just managing the growth, line and development, pacing the infrastructure capacity, having the developers provide improvements as part of their developments is a great strategy that you all have employed so far, but obviously, the transportation plan is going to give us a more focused look as to some areas that we probably need to look at, additional town sponsored, town specific projects to be able to do that as well. In terms of our downtown, repurposing of new spaces and underused downtown spaces, a lot of that, you got to make sure you have the right partners or the right property owners that are ready to do that, but I think our economic development office has done a great job kind of staying on top of that and working with our DDA folks to find where those opportunities are. Aesthetic improvements, already some of those are underway, additional parking capacity, that seems to be a very current and reoccurring theme that I believe this council is well aware of. Sidewalk and pedestrian crossings, and then additional festivals and programming overall, I think the town does provide a lot of opportunities, but certainly can always provide a few more if time and or dollars allow. So again, consistent themes here, diversifying businesses and entertainment, provide pedestrian pedestrian safety, elevating the dining and nightlife by broadening food and restaurant choices with a focus of health and diversity and promoting events for adults. Improving access and parking, again, big, big focus there, but also including more of that ADA accessibility with the wheelchair access, several comments about that in the study. Supporting green and cultural initiatives by encouraging native landscaping and then optimizing those public areas, transforming some of the vacant lots that we have currently into either parks, markets, or some other, some other use. Special events, rank basically just based on which ones folks either attended or felt a connection to, excuse me, Harv's Festival seems to be certainly one of the top vote getters downtown, or the top vote getter. Our downtown concert series is always very popular, as well as our Christmas tree lighting and Fourth of July events, the Christmas parade, and then our two newer events being the Veterans Day and Juneteenth celebrations that, I think this is the third year for the veterans and second year that we've gone, or two years in a row that we've done the Juneteenth, we continue to build on those programs and would like to make sure that we can get some better participation or, you know, more participation in those events as well. All in all, again, not going to go through all 574, but we did provide you all a copy so that you can read through them at your leisure, but we did receive 574 open ended responses. Again, those summaries that you saw were a compilation of what we kind of saw as those common themes within there, but certainly feel free if you get a chance to read through them and have any specific ones that you'd like us to either delve into a little bit deeper or at least consider specifically. But from those, really the top 20 recurring, traffic improvements, public transportation, bike and ped, public safety, Parks and Rec, well, I won't belabor it and have me read through the entire slide here, but this was kind of the top 20 themes when you boil down those 574 comments into really where we want to be making sure we focus. I do believe all these top 20 themes that we have here are already incorporated into the different staff requests that have been provided to us for consideration for the FY25 budget, but we will certainly look at where there's other opportunities to either expand or enhance those requests as well, specific to the study, survey, excuse me. With that, it's very clear to us, based on the responses that we've got, that we've got a very diverse community with a lot of different needs and interests, as we start looking at FY25 budget and kind of calling that down to what the recommendation will be in March, excuse me, in May, we'll definitely look at focusing on where we can including and addressing some of these for your consideration as well, but I think from the overarching kind of the status of the town and kind of where we feel like the community is focused on, very similar results to what we've had for the last few years and very consistent with the different initiatives and the different projects that you all have been prioritizing. So we're encouraged that it feels like we are moving in the right direction or on the right track, but certainly always an opportunity to get great feedback and get affirmation of that or see where we need to pivot. So with that, any thoughts, questions?
Questions or comments? I just want to say for the record, I sincerely appreciate the almost 1,000 people who filled that information out, and it's good information for me, it's good information for our council and staff, and I appreciate that very much, and I'm sure that we will take all of those recommendations under advisement as we prepare for the 2024-25 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
All right, now we'll jump to the safer grant, that's the staffing for adequate fire and emergency responses, and I'll get the floor to Chief Rains.
Good evening, mayor and town council, David Rains, fire chief. So stood before you a couple of weeks ago to talk about two grants, one that we had been awarded, and another one that we were seeking, and so tonight I come before you again to talk about two additional grants that we are pursuing. again to talk about two additional grants that we are pursuing. The Fire Department is submitting for a FEMA SAFER grant to secure additional staffing, additional personnel. And so the purpose of this grant is to enhance our department's operational capabilities and to ensure compliance with NFPA 1710, while increasing staffing levels for Engine One and Rescue One, which both run out of Station Two over on Highway 42. The SAFER grant program is designed to assist the departments in maintaining and increasing the number of trained frontline firefighters available for response for a period of three years. By Securities Grant, we aim to improve response times and effectiveness in emergency situations, enhance firefighter and public safety by ensuring adequate staffing levels, ensuring compliance with NFPA 1710 standards for staffing and response times, and to address staffing shortages for Engine Two and Rescue One while allowing for operational efficiency. The SAFER grant is funded 100% for a term of three years, and our estimated grant request is $1.512 million. The deadline for submission was April 12th of 2024, and the notification of awards will begin July 31st, and all awards will be announced by September 30th of 2024. So any questions about that grant?
Questions or comments?
Okay. And the second grant we're working on is with Firehouse Subs, and this grant will be used to purchase some paratech technical rescue equipment. The equipment is essential for our department's rescue operations, since we're not only responsible for providing technical rescue services in town, we're contracted to provide technical rescue services for the county. And Securities Grant will significantly enhance our capabilities to respond to various emergency situations involving large vehicles, rail cars, and industrial incidents. Benefits to equipment include enhanced rescue operations, improved safety for both victims and rescue personnel, and efficiency and effectiveness of technical rescue operations. The Firehouse Sub Grant covers the entire cost of the equipment, therefore, if awarded the grant, there will be no direct financial implications for the town. Notifications for the grant awards will be made around the time of July 30th, 31st, 2024. Any questions on that?
Questions or comments?
All right, thank you so much.
I just, I would like to say, congratulations on aggressively following up on these grants. It's very impressive. You've hit the ground running, and we do appreciate your work and these efforts.
Thank you, Chief. All right, anyone else? All right, I'll now open the floor for public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments. No comments from council. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the purchasing of real property and to discuss a legal matter.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so? Motion carries.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Like, sign?
Motion carries. Good night. Thank you.
Motion carries. Good night. Thank you.